This is seven oh five, I'm calling this Germantown, are we ready? Sorry? Okay. Calling this Germantown School District Board of Education meeting to order. Please stand if you're able and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. Thank you. Item number one, official meeting notification, Dr. Reuter.
Yep, public notice of all meetings has been given by communication from the superintendent's office to the public. To those in the news media who have requested such notices, in the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, Northwest Now, Express News, and the Westbin Daily News. Public notice has also been posted in the schools throughout the district, on the Germantown School District website, as well as cable access channel ninety-six.
Thank you. Roll call.
Medvin.
Here.
Barney, I am here.
Soderberg.
Here.
Loth.
Here.
Ewert.
Here.
Pollack.
Here.
And Reineman is absent excused.
Thank you. Item two, approval of the agenda, do I have a motion?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Harry Nunn, all's in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Moving on to item three, reports. Item A, district administrator update, Dr. Reuter.
Yeah, as you can see funneling in here, we have a few visitors this evening. MacArthur Elementary will be presenting some information this evening. Some students are going to share work related to the units of study for writers workshop this evening. We're also, you know, a couple of days away from the end of the school year on a calendar year and going into the winter break, so that we have a short week this week, school concluding Thursday, unless these meteorologists are a hundred percent right and I'll be up all night Wednesday. Determining that, information went out today on how we decide to close school for inclement weather internally to our staff and our district update. And then I believe tomorrow the parent newsletter goes out for the last one of this calendar year. And that also outlined to parents and where they should look and the communications that'll come from the district. So it's kind of timely given the dire predictions that are coming in the next couple of days. Speaking of meteorologists, County Line had CBS fifty-eight meteorologist there last week and had some really great presentations around weather and some hands-on pieces. Mr. Eisenbach sent information out to families as well as it'll be some information and pictures from the events will be put on our Facebook page. We also had last Friday, the Germantown High School carolers from the choir went around each of our sites and sang Christmas songs to our schools' communities. So that was great to see, as well as they went to Fairway Knoll Senior Living Community Center and provided some spirit and cheer. And then on another note, last week, or on December eighth, the district hosted Germantown leadership. Myself and Mr. Gonzalez are currently going through the program and we hosted, we gave an overview of the district. Heather and Sarah came to talk about co-curriculars in the PAC and how those spaces are utilized or how the programming is utilized. Mr. Gonzalez then gave us a very spirited tour of MacArthur and we were able to see kids in the buildings. And it was great for the different members of leadership that may have had kids go through the district, have kids in the district, or have yet to have kids in the district, see the functions of our school. And then we ended the day at the high school and saw all of our great facilities up there. And we're able to hand out some sports passes and Germantown memorabilia for our members. So it was a great day to kind of showcase the district to that leadership group. So with that, I will turn it, I think we have moved on to our next item so we can see our featured guests this evening.
Absolutely, item B, the MacArthur Elementary presentation. Mr. Tony Gonzalez, come on, it's up, the floor is yours.
I get to, I get to kick off things for Tony, so I guess he uses Tony. So this year in grades, kindergarten through eighth grade students are engaged in developing their writing skills through the units of study for writing. Each grade level has units of study that support their development as writers in different writing genres including persuasive, informational, and narrative. As students grow from one grade level to the next, so does the complexity of writing involved within each genre. For example, in the genre of narrative, kindergarten students learn to write true stories. In first grade, kids write small moment stories narrowing the scope of their stories and working on making their characters come to life. By second grade, students study the craft of narrative writing by using authors as mentors. And in third grade, they write detailed actions, thoughts, feelings, and dialogue to bring their characters to life for their readers. Tonight, students from MacArthur will share their stories with you and you'll be able to see how the narrative genre comes alive uniquely in each story and develops in each grade level. There was one student who decided that they were going to take the opportunity, since they were presenting to the board, to hop to our next unit. So you'll get to hear their opinion piece tonight. But everybody else should be in the genre of narrative. So I would like to introduce Mr. Tony Gonzalez, our principal at MacArthur, who will introduce the students who have come to share their stories and their opinion piece with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. So thank you, everyone, for allowing us to come here. It's a great opportunity to see for our scholars and their families. We know that you guys are all very busy and we appreciate the opportunity to present. One of the things that we have been doing at MacArthur is, like Jake and Chris had talked about, is our units of study. This cannot happen without the amazing teachers we have at MacArthur and within our district. They have dove into the curriculum, have asked a lot of questions, received a lot of professional development. So without them, this is not possible. So a big shout out to all the teachers of the Germantown School District. With that being said, I'm going to introduce our scholars. And we're going to start all the way from our second graders and move up to our fourth graders. So I will introduce them all individually. And our leader to start things off is Mr. Cole Kneissler? Is it the right rate? I've been saying it wrong for about a year and a half now. So Cole's going to come on up and Rhonda, I'm going to ask if you can help us so we can make sure this happens. All right? All right, Cole?
Welcome.
You can start whenever you want, whenever you're ready.
Going to Temecula. Once when I went to Temecula, I I woke up in the middle of the night and drove to the airport. We checked and went through security. We got breakfast and waited for the plane. We finally got on the plane. Soon the plane started going up. It felt like I was on a roller coaster. I was coloring and watching a movie on the plane ride. We got to the other airport. I took a walk around the airport. The sun was rising. I took a picture. Then the other plane came. This one I this one I this one was like thirty minutes. After a little bit, we landed at another airport. We took a bus to the renting store. My mom and dad rented a car. We drove to the house. We, we got to the house, I saw my cousins. I was so, so excited to see my cousins. They were in the pool. I fast changed into my swimsuit, went into the hot tub because my cousins were in there. Then my other cousins came. Then we got out of the pool and ate lunch. After lunch, we watched Toy Story. After Toy Story was done, we had to also eat dinner. After eating dinner, we cooked smores and a skunk farted. So then I changed and played with light sticks and sparklers and went in the pool. I was, I was just in the hot tub after after a long time, we had to go to bed. I woke up in the morning and starting packing up. We had to leave in the afternoon. We ate breakfast, then went in the pool for a long time and ate lunch. We said goodbye to all our cousins and left to the airport. We got we got to the airport. I was playing on my switch and eating. Finally, I got on the plane, then I got home. I had to unpack. Finally, I was done unpacking. I went to sleep and dreamed about going there next summer and next summer or next summer again and again. I loved going there.
Thanks, y'all.
Good job. As you can see, that's a second grade writing piece. And that's more than Mr. Gonzalez could probably do in forty-five minutes. So Cole, great work, great impersonating. The next time you go on vacation, make sure you invite me to it. Next up is another second grader, Ethan Nguyen. I'm going to have you come on up here and then you're going to share your writing, okay Ethan?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ethan Nguyen, second grader, Mrs. Collins class, MacArthur Elementary, Germantown School District. Today, I am going to read my story about Legoland Discovery Center, Chicago, and how I got there. Well, on the weekend of October, I went to Chicago. It was really fun. So the first thing we had to do was pack, was pack a lot of stuff. We packed it up, food, water, and other, and other stuffs. Then, then we jumped it on the car and my dad start the engine. And then we went out and then we zoomed out of the garage. The trip was two hours and thirty minutes. On the trip there, I was so excited because I wondered what I am going to do there. But when we arrived it, I was really amazed. I was most amazed at the height of the building. The old church I saw was like thirty, twenty feet tall. And the heavy traffic on the road. After I arrived at the Asian Market area, we sent gifts and packages to my grandma and grandpa in Vietnam. Then we went to a shop called Viet Hau. The shop was huge and a little tight. After we checked it out of the store, we came to a Vietnamese restaurant. My mom bought Vietnamese sandwiches. Then we went to Legoland Discovery Center, my part I've been waiting for so long. The most part was like the statue of the big giraffe in front, which is I took my picture with my mom and dad. Then we went in. So we had to check in a lot of stuffs and some people even gave us cards and tags to take awesome brightly pictures. But we, after check-in time, we even can change our backgrounds. Then we got a sheet called the Halloween Scary Find Missing Monsters in Legoland. So after we got the paper, we started our journey. When we were in, I saw some awesome, huge Lego sets, which were Coco Movie Site studies and the episode five of Star Wars, which is Luke and Yoda walking in a dark forest and the planet full of woods, so with the little impatient Jerome R2D2. Also, the football field was also amazing. It was the Packers one. But I thought the teams were Packers versus Jets, but I'm not sure. So one of the Jets player kind of looked confusing and crooked on his face. So he looked alike if he was hit by the ball and jumping up and also being tackled down. Then the dark jungle was, was the next stop, my favorite spot of all in Legoland Discovery Center of all. So in the jungle, it was dark, dark. And you might feel like snakes following you and shivers down your spine and spiders staring at you with their six yellow eyes. And make you curled up in tigers and they also might scare you or make you shiver to death. Frogs look like if they're going to jump on you if they're dark and poison. The next stop was our curly stairs to go up to the movie theater of like, of the Halloween party, which just came out. So it started in ten minutes, but it made a wind like, like feeling like you're driving the roller coaster and even bums in your seats. It shoots out like a little water to feel like you were really jumped it in a pool and, and got like, and got like running away in the wind. And I also helped unemployed there to make a vampire, but that was before. After that was the Pirate Land Playground, which was really fun. It had like rock walls, slides, and other climbing activities. After that, we went to get our pictures with amazing backgrounds. I, so me and my brother picked in a Juggo backgrounds and my, and mom and dad, and my mom and dad picked it up, so the Halloween background. After that, we went for souvenirs. We got prizes of finding all the missing monsters on the sheet we got. And I really loved the day and I'm honored that's the best day of my life. And I hope I go there again with my family and I hope you guys enjoy my story.
And Ethan, I'll go to Legoland any day. If my dogs have to go to the American Girl Store, I'll go to Legoland. Next on our agenda is a third grader by the name of Callie Russell. So come on up, Callie.
Tonight, I'm going to read you The Craziest Day of My Life, written by Callie Del-Russell. Run, Callie, run, my mom shouted after me as I ran through the grass and all the magnificently big soccer fields. About twelve minutes later, all of a sudden bam, it was starting to pour. Ah, we were all screaming. It was freezing. It probably dropped about eleven degrees. Then it started to hail. It's hailing, I screamed. Just let you know, we were all kind of screaming. About half an hour later, it was our throw-in and the ref tossed me the ball and it hit my nose and I started to laugh. It was still pouring, then I wiped my nose. Oh, blood, I thought. Then I turned around and looked at the ref. You have a bloody nose, she said in fear. I know, I replied. Then I started sprinting to the sideline. Callie, get in the game, shouted Coach Jason. But I have a bloody nose, I replied. Oh my gosh, um, okay, let's get you something to put on your nose, okay? Asked Danielle. Okay, I replied. Uh, Peyton, go in for Callie, right wing, shouted Coach Jason. Okay, yelled Peyton. Danielle grabbed Mia's pants and gave them to me to put in my nose. Hey, those are my pants, yelled Mia. You'll be fine, said Danielle. Fine, said Mia. I could hear a little bit of attitude in her voice. Then I put the pants in my nose. A couple of minutes later, I was ready to go in. Then I went in for striker. I faked out four girls. I was on beast mode. Fake, 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 I kept saying fake for a while. I was on the left side of the goal. I took a shot. Goal! Eleven nil. I ran back to the midfield line for the other team's kickoff. They kicked to the right and I sprinted right at the girl with the ball. Then I snatched it, then I passed it to Libby. Libby, pass back, I screamed. Here you go, screamed Libby. Then I passed it to Mia. Mia takes a shot and nutmegs the goalie right into the goal. Goal! Twelve nil. We ran back to the midfield line for the other team's kickoff. Millions of high fives going to Mia and me. The ref blew the whistle. Riley snatched the ball from the girl who got it. Then she passed it to Peyton. Peyton, pass, I screamed. Peyton passed it to me. Then I passed it to Libby. Libby took a shot. Goal! Thirteen nil. We hustled back to the midfield line for the other team's kickoff. Subs, Coach Jason called. Everybody off, Coach Jason called once more, but then the ref blew the whistle. That's game, yelled the ref. We had won. It's not as easy to play in the rain as playing in the sun. It wasn't goodbye to my team forever. The end.
Goal! All right, thank you very much, Callie. And as you heard, one of those characters was Mia in her story and the one who could be 2D. That's my daughter. So Mia, why don't you come up and share about your personal narrative, okay?
Can I start?
Whenever you're ready.
Boom, I heard a loud noise and I think I know what it was. Yup, it's the plane that we were riding on to get to Atlanta and we just landed. When we stepped off, my mom happily replied, wow, it's super hot, way hotter here than it is back in Germantown. I can't wait, cheered Grace, my sister. Me too, I announced, mostly to swim, but also to see our cousins. After that, we got picked up by a rental car. The guy driving the rental car was driving us to our cousin's house, the most exciting place on earth. Why? Well, they have a hot tub and the biggest swimming pool ever. Beep 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 beeped the horn on the rental car. Oh my gosh, I chuckled as we pulled in our cousin's driveway. My sister and I raced out of the car and into the house. Then mom shouted Mia. I replied, what? Mom exclaimed, can you help take some of the suitcases in? I answered, sure, come on Grace, let's help mom by taking some of the suitcases inside. I'll race you there. Grace giggled. As soon as we reached the car, I asked, what do you need us to grab? She responded, can you grab the blue tie dye suitcase? And can you have Grace grab the pink swirly suitcase? I answered, no problem. Great, mom sang out. We had grabbed the suitcases. Now we can go inside, I offered to Grace. She responded, let's do this. As we stepped onto the brown hard stone floor, I knew we were going to have the best time ever. The end.
All right, our next one is a rebel rouser. This is Oakley Huntington. And she's going to tell you, give you her little persuasive piece.
Welcome.
Girls, you need to be ready to dance. Girls, you need to be ready to dance in two minutes, the teacher announces. As I struggled to get my soft shoes on, I tell my teacher, but I just got here, she says. Well, Oakley, you need to get here earlier. I have heard this a lot in the last year and a half. My school ends too late and this is a big problem. The first reason I believe school ends too late is because people have after-school activities to do. School ends at four oh two, which makes it very hard to make it to after-school activities on time. Some people have to leave from school early just to get to their activities. Some people have activities at four thirty, four forty-five. I even have a friend that starts ballet at four fifteen. On my dance nights, I have no time to eat, a snack, or do chores or homework before activities. I'm usually pretty hungry after school because lunchtime is twelve fifteen. For example, I have Irish dance at four forty-five and school ends at four oh two. I get in the pickup line to be picked up ten, fifteen minutes later. By the time I get home, it's four thirty and I have no time to do my homework or eat a snack before I have to go to dance. When I get to dance, I have to get my shoes on and do warmups. They expect me to be there by four thirty. So if I get there, so if I get home at four thirty, I have to go, go, go. No time to get shorts and t-shirt on. Sometimes after a long day at school, I take a long time to get ready. Soon I'm going to be late for dance. I don't like to be late for dance and make my teacher and my class wait for me. We have a lot to do in our class. We learn new stuff in the beginning of each class and I really don't want to miss that. The second reason school ends too late is because roads are busy at four fifteen and especially near our school. Accidents could happen at this time, especially because children are leaving school. Some kids walk or bike to school. By our school, it is very crowded with everybody coming home from work and from school. Although a car accident has never happened to me in that area, I wonder how many car accidents have happened or could happen. I have seen pretty bad car accidents in that area. Car accidents are really bad and if you get hurt, that can affect you for the rest of your life. Especially when the roads are slippery, you could fall in a ditch. The last reason why school ends too late is because of daylight savings. Where we live, in the winter, the sun sets at four and school ends at four oh six or four oh two. When people are walking down to the bus or pickup or walker station or buses, it's just getting darker. Kids have to walk home in the dark if they're walker. When kids are getting off the bus, they can't see their house or their parents. When kids are walking out of that parent pickup and it's icy, they could slip. Or snowy, they can still slip and if they can't see, it's just more of a chance for you to slip. You can also not see if you're trying to get into your car and the door is open and your head hits the edge or something in your body does, that can be a trip to the emergency room. This happened to my brother. If you got new shoes and you wore them to school and you can't see, you might step in a puddle and get them all dirty. I hope that you can change the school time to around three or something close to that because it's a big problem for me and many other people are talking about this issue.
Persuasive speech, right? And last but not least, we have Caitlin Ayer. Those A and I, first one does the walk and the talking, right?
Don't do this, you can, you can jump off this, not this, blah, blah, blah. Wear your life jackets no matter where you are in the water. The wind spilled out of the lifeguard's mouth like a volcano. What are you going to use? I'm definitely going to use the paddleboard, Sydney inquired. I'm going to try, I'm going to try the paddleboard too, I decided. We walked over to the group of the other paddleboarders. Are you going to jump, Sydney asked me? I didn't think too much about it. Jordan told me, I'm going to kayak. I responded, I'm going to try the paddleboard. Suddenly, the girls from the last group got on the mega board, shouted, OMG, there's a snapping turtle in the water, get me out! That made me worry. It made me worry a lot. I knew there were snapping turtles in the water, but I didn't think about how they could be right there. What? A bunch of my group yelled. The lifeguards had to try to calm everyone down. They told us stuff like, if you don't bother, if you don't bother it, you'll be fine. Or they're more scared of you than we are scared of them. Yet it was as if no one even noticed. Okay. Let's get the paddleboards out there now. The lifeguard got us into line. I was third. I was still worrying about the turtle. After about fifteen minutes of waiting, it felt like forever to get onto the water. Finally, I was in front of the line after what felt like hours of waiting. All right. You have your paddle, your ankle scrap, your ankle strap, your life jacket, you should be good to go. Remember, if you want to jump, put your paddle in this spot. Because of your ankle strap, you'll always be by your paddle. The lifeguard explained to each one of us as we got onto our board. I was finally, I was finally able to be on the water. I yelled, Sydney, wait for me! I giggled as I tried to get a handle of how I would use it. It was super confusing at first, but once I caught up to Sydney, it was a lot easier to glide through the water with a simple stroke of the paddle. Are you still thinking, Sydney asked, knowing I never responded. Jump, I thought to myself. What about the turtle? I kept thinking. Maybe, I told her, knowing that I probably wouldn't. I just still couldn't believe that Sydney was planning to. Jordan was the first one out because she and one of our leaders were the only people doing kayaks. Jordan said, you should, I bet it would be fun. I thought and I thought, but still, I just didn't feel it. But I also didn't feel right being the only person who didn't jump in. I felt so weird. But by the time I was done thinking, all of the other paddleboarders were over by us. Okay, are we doing the first jump in, Sydney asked? Everyone but me nodded their heads yes, and a couple of the girls even said it. Everyone else wanted to jump too? I thought at least one other person would be hesitant, but no, just me. I looked down to the water, pulling my board slightly left. I looked back up at the people who were ready to jump and thought, am I a baby? Everyone was about to do their first jump in, but I decided I couldn't, at least not yet. Splash! Everyone but me tucked their paddles in and jumped. It looked fun, but I couldn't forget what the last group said about the turtle. Hey Caitlin, why didn't you jump in, Jordan asked. I replied, I don't know, I was nervous. I knew for a fact that I was more than nervous, scary even. I kept paddling around, hoping no one would think it's weird to have not jumped in with everyone else on the first jump. Sydney tried to encourage me by telling me, the rest of us did it and Fred didn't get us. It'll be all right. Still, I didn't care to take in what she was saying. Her wet hair looked like she had just got out of a shower, but again, I didn't care. Fred is the name of the snapping turtle at camp last year. No one knew if it was actually Fred or if it was one of his family members and no one will ever know either. After a bit, we were all jumping, getting back on, and paddling around. Yet I still hadn't jumped in. By that point, Molly's mom was there. So you still don't want to jump, Molly's mom asked me. I quickly and roughly nodded my head yes. After a while, it was clear that I was not jumping in, or at least not for a while, I thought. Everyone was nagging me to jump in. A couple of times I got close, but just couldn't do it. Just jump, nothing can get you, Sydney kept on telling me, but I would barely even take it into consideration. Then, I finally mastered up the courage to jump. Three, two, one, everyone shouted, but suddenly, all of that courage was gone. I had no idea what happened. One second, I was finally ready to jump, but then it was gone. I had thought and thought and thought, but then I realized I just needed to go. They counted down again and this time, there was no going back. Three, two, one! The paddle, my paddle was on the board and I made sure my strap was ta- was on tight. I flew into the air just to hit the water and stay in for a couple seconds. I knew everyone else went in with me, which they agreed, with, which they agreed to do. And it was over, I did it. I finally jumped in, I thought, that was so fun! I was about to go again when we heard, time's up, come back to shore. It was the lifeguard's telling us that it was our, that our time was up. I paddled to catch up with Jordan and we paddled back together. The other girls were having a race to get back, so I shouted, I'm going to win! We were almost back and Sydney beat me, barely, but I didn't mind. We waited for everyone else. After everyone was off their board, we all ran to get to the barn to hang up our ja- our life jackets back up. We had to run on the gravel to get to the other side, so some people said it hurt, but I didn't mind. Can I get a little help hanging mine, I asked? One of the lifeguards grabbed my jacket and hung it up. After, we all grabbed our towels and dried off. In the end, we talked and talked about what we did and stuff we liked and what we didn't and how we all had fun. While we talked, I realized that sometimes taking a chance can make things much more fun. I hope my troop and I can go boating again next year.
So as you can see, writing has been a focus of ours and the stamina that we have noticed with our scholars have been tremendous. The amount of writing that they are able to do has grown exponentially. Um, a lot of that, like I said before, it has to do with the staff, right? They have taught and taught professional development on it as well. So, thank you guys for taking time to hear our scholars, there are some great stories there. Scholars, let's continue to write, we have a lot more writing to do, okay? And so, thank you guys all for your time and appreciate you guys all very much.
Thank you so much. Before you go, I wanna say that one of the best things we get to do at board meetings is listen to presentations from our kids at the schools. Um, and you guys tonight definitely didn't disappoint. Nice job to all of you, great stories, keep up the good work, thank you.
I actually have a question. So, this persuasion unit, when does that, you said-
They're working on unit two.
Okay, so that's, that's right now?
Right now.
Okay, so, we need to make sure that we get the school start times on the agenda in a couple months? Cause I wanna hear these public comments all over. Great job, scholars.
Oakley will be here.
Okay, great. Great job. My family is a MacArthur family, so I have extra pride in, in you guys, uh, fantastic job, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Please take care, okay?
You bet, thank you.
Go pack, go. Sorry, Paul, sorry.
We'll give just a minute here, but on deck, we have citizen comments. First up, we have Jamie Canostra. So we'll give a few minutes, but then we'll have you come on up.
Hi, uh, James Canestra, uh, math teacher at Germantown High School for twenty-two years. Um, representing the GEA right now, um, as we kinda wrap up the calendar issue, uh, today, which is kinda like the final part of the negotiations that we had. Just expressing a little disappointment when we, uh, were negotiating and we were kinda going back and forth with money. We brainstormed on ideas that we could be compensated without costing the district money. And one of the ideas that came up and was well received was a, a reduction in the number of days in the calendar. Um, it was all received, couldn't be done at that time, that's what the law says. So, the, the word was, oh, just bring it up in calendar and we'll work it out in calendar. Um, now the calendar's coming up to you guys today, um, and we saw the draft. The draft did not include any of those days, it was not a part of any of the discussion during the calendar committee. And so, that's kinda where we're at, just this is the final straw of where we finished up with that negotiations really. And just sharing our disappointment with that, thanks guys.
Thank you. Chelsea, Chelsea Lovell, welcome.
Good evening, my name is Chelsea Lovell, I am a third grade teacher at Amy Bell Elementary School. Um, and I am here in regards to speak to you, um, about the calendar and put, please adding in elementary workdays. Um, I have a letter here that we actually sent around, um, to numerous elementary teachers. Um, and they all signed this letter in support of adding these days in, and I would like to read you that letter right now. Uh, to whom it may concern, we are writing to you once again about teacher workdays for your elementary staff. In the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year, we were fortunate to have one. This school year, we have two on the calendar. Teachers have found these incredibly helpful and pr- in providing the best education possible for our students. The facts still remain the same. Germantown Elementary teachers have at least seven point five more days of student contact hours than required by DPI. Our neighboring districts have teacher workdays because they understand the value in them. Teacher workdays have long been recognized as a way to help teachers do their jobs successfully. Teachers have time to create, to collaborate, and to communicate. These da- these days also benefit our district. As the nationwide teacher shortage starts to affect the district, these workdays will help Germantown stay competitive with our neighbors. This is also a zero cost way for Germantown to care for its teachers, present and the future. We are asking that teacher workdays for elementary schools be on the calendar for the next year and years coming forward. We are not asking for days off. We are asking for days that enable us to work effectively together. Myself personally, I have used these days last year, um, when our writing curriculum was first brought up, brought forward to us. I was able to use these days to really read through the curriculum, um, before I was teaching this lesson. I was able to collaborate with my team members and my colleagues to make sure that we were consistent across our classrooms. We were able to reach out cross district to making sure we were consistent not only in our building, but across the entire district. This year, um, I plan on, as you heard, uh, six smi- wonderful samples of writing. Um, these teacher workdays are so beneficial to us. We have twelve of these pieces per student the entire year, times four, we have four units. So it's a lot of wonderful writing that we get to see from our students. And these teacher workdays for me personally, allow me to have that time to give them the energy, the time and energy into each of those individual pieces. Uh, they worked really hard on it and they deserve for me to be able to give them just as much back to them as I can. So, I look forward to you, um, please considering adding some elementary teacher workdays in the calendar, um, before you approve it this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Amy Martin.
Hi, uh, I'm Amy Martin, I teach second grade at Amy Bell and I talked to you last year about these elementary teacher workdays. And when I realized they weren't included on next year's schedule, I thought, I, I understand that you might not know exactly what goes into teachers' workdays other than the student contact hours. So, a big part of our, um, job is crafting lessons, you know that, we're experts in our field. And we aren't just opening textbooks, uh, teacher manuals and finding a lesson and following it. We create whole group lessons and small group lessons. In reading alone, I'm creating every week five whole group lessons and fifteen small group lessons. So that's twenty lessons a week, those aren't written in any curriculum for me. Um, and we're also doing that in math and writing, as Jake talked about before, where we're trying to meet the needs of all of our learners. We, um, are also creating, um, curriculum in areas where we don't have it. The social studies textbook for second grade is so old, I think I used it when I was in second grade. And I need to have something that meets the standards for my students, so we're creating our own curriculum in that area. Another part of my job is creating or offering meaningful feedback for our students and our parents. Um, elementary schools have two twenty-minute conferences with each family per year. And, um, those take a lot of prep work, whether they're student-led or teacher-led. We also have report cards, which, um, if you haven't seen them recently, in the elementary school, we don't just give them one grade for writing, they have nine different areas in writing where we grade each student, twenty to twenty-five, thirty students. Um, there are eleven different behavior skills that we grade for each student and nineteen reading skills for each student that go into the report cards twice a year. Um, in conclusion, I'm, you employ a million educational experts. And I was looking at my building today and counting up the hours, I can believe in your elementary schools, you have well over a thousand years of expertise, agical, educators with experience, thousands of years of experience. And we are telling you, as signed by all those people, we need these days to teach your children the way that they deserve to be taught. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item five, approval of the minutes, November twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, Board of Education meeting, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from November twenty-first, twenty twenty.
Second. Mr. Ebert and Mr. Barney with a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes. Insurance committee, which met earlier tonight, Mr. Barney.
Yeah, uh, we heard from USI, our consultant, uh, regarding our pending implementation of self-funding insurance. A lot of stuff's already in place, employee ID cards have been sent out, uh, pharmacy cards have been sent out. Uh, the vitality program is queued up and ready to go for one-one. Um, there's a new mobile app that plan participants will have access to. We also covered with our consultant, I think one of the biggest concerns when you're changing networks, is my doctor gonna be in plan? They told us there was a point three percent, um, gap, I guess, where there may not be that person's preferred provider. So, pretty good, I would think, you know, less than one percent. Um, but from what I understand, everything's ready to go. Yeah, alright, nothing further.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to item seven, Personnel Committee.
Yes, we met earlier, uh, to, this evening, uh, we're fairly focused in, in the couple of items that, that we needed to discuss. And so therefore, uh, those two topics being the retiree life insurance elimination as well as the limited term contract benefits. Uh, so therefore, uh, the Personnel Committee brings forward a motion with a positive recommendation to approve the elimination of the benefit of offering retirees the ability to continue life insurance in retirement with the employer, employee being responsible for paying one hundred percent of the premium and to remove this language from each employee section of the employee handbook effective January first and will also grandfather fifty-nine retirees who currently purchase life insurance as part of this benefit.
Okay, that comes with a positive recommendation, does not require a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes.
The second item, uh, as I mentioned, dealt with limited term contract benefits. And therefore, the Personnel Committee brings forward a motion with a positive recommendation to approve the modification of the employee handbook language to note, quote, limited term contract teachers would be eligible to receive a health insurance benefit after ninety days of employment. Additionally, limited term contract employees are not eligible for enrollment in long-term disability, short-term disability, or life insurance, unquote. Uh, this would be effective January first, twenty twenty-three. And, uh, any limit, limited term contracts would be grandfathered into the current handbook language for the remainder of their current limited term contract.
Okay, that also comes with a positive recommendation, does not require a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes.
And that would be it from the Personnel Committee.
Okay. Item A, we have Finance Committee tonight as well, Mr. Lovell.
Yes, Finance Committee met earlier this evening and we, uh, discussed the, uh, November vouchers. Uh, we had a number of questions for, uh, Brittany that she answered. And, uh, I think it's interesting that going through the vouchers, uh, how much we can learn, uh, about certain things in the district. So, I, I'm not gonna go through any of those questions, but it, it is interesting, uh, the questions that come up. Uh, item, Finance item six A, uh, we went through the, uh, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two financial audit and, uh, Ms. Wendy Unger from Baker Tilly, uh, presented to us. Uh, she gave us the Cliffs Notes version of the entire, uh, report. And that's all I'm gonna give here is the Cliffs Notes version. You can listen to her version, uh, on the, uh, finance, um, video that'll be posted later in the week, uh, on our website. But anyway, I know no one can read this, but the full report is posted under Business Services, under Audit Reports. So, any citizens that want to read the full report can do it, uh, on our website. Finance item six B, uh, was ESER update. And, uh, we discussed a number of issues, uh, for the dollars we have remaining. We have roughly one point one million dollars, uh, left in the budget. Uh, but, uh, the, what we discussed this evening was about two point three million dollars in expenses. So obviously, there's some things that we're gonna need to cut. Probably the, uh, big items to be cut are, is, uh, air conditioning. Uh, we're not gonna be able to get to air condition all of the schools, uh, throughout the district because that's about two million dollars, uh, unto itself. So, anyway, this was just a, uh, initial look into, uh, ESER dollar, uh, spending. And, uh, everyone's gonna come back who presented with a little more information, a little more detail and, uh, will be approving the dollars, um, in January?
We were going to in January, maybe we'll get pushed back-
Okay.
Depending on that discussion.
Yeah, January or maybe a little bit later. Um, and then last, uh, item six C was, uh, Brittany's, uh, variance report. So far, we've spent, uh, five hundred and sixteen thousand dollars less at this time this year than last year. I think another interesting item that came up is that we actually received three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars extra from the federal government as part of ESER. Uh, right now, there isn't any, uh, plan for those dollars, we're just going to save them and see where we might need them in the future. Did I, did I cover that?
It's, um, it's not ESER, it is back to school, I think it's on the other page.
Oh, okay.
Back to school supplemental?
There you go.
Thank you, Tom, back to school supplemental. And that's it for finance. Russ? What's, what's that?
I just wanted to add-
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
You, you, you mentioned we discussed the air conditioning, uh, that might not be financially viable, but with the thought that the other three categories being loss of learning, mental health, and safety for our students, staff, uh, as being the potentially more concerning issues and could probably make a larger impact with the monies in those areas.
Right, right.
And I just wanted to thank the staff for the discussions surrounding those three areas.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so, our, our thoughts on that is, uh, we're going to try and fully air condition the middle school because that in, that benefits all students, you know, versus trying to single out a single, uh, elementary school that maybe we could get done, you know, this year. So, I don't know if that's how it's going, but that's where we're at right now and that's it.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Okay, moving on to item nine, new business, review and discussion of proposed twenty twenty-three WISB resolutions.
Yeah, so, coming up, um, in January is the annual, um, State Education Conference and a couple of you are attending that. Mr. Satterberg is our delegate representative, so this evening, we have shared with you the proposed resolutions for the board to discuss and provide recommendations to Mr. Satterberg. And directors, um, are here to answer any questions related to the given topics on our perspectives administratively as well, so.
Yeah, we'll open, we'll open it up if anyone has any questions, um, for administration on any of the resolutions, things that we may not understand how, how best handle it. Otherwise, I recommend that we all communicate with Bob and let him know our thoughts as we've done in the past. And, uh, I think Bob will do a pretty good job of representing us.
Yeah, um, you have the information in front of you, um, I mean, this was mailed to my, my home, I've got it. I've perused that, uh, over the past couple of days, I have taken notes, but- have taken notes, but, uh, as in past years, I, I, I value your input. Um, but, uh, I think we're all somewhat like-minded in terms of, uh, our approach. Um, you can tell one of the resolutions is a direct shock over our bow, based on the security resolution that the board passed. Uh, so I'll be, um, making some comments about that, uh, in the session. But, uh, I value your, your input, and I welcome your comments.
Okay.
And we, uh, the Delegate Assembly is January eighteen at one-thirty. So, I know we've got, uh, a little less than a, a little less than a month, but, uh, I know you'll get it in, so, appreciate it.
Do you want those comments now, or emailed?
Emailed, preferably.
If you have any questions for administration about anything, please feel free.
Um, page five, Ford Requirements for Educators. Is this a lessening of the requirements or restrictions we would hold for those educators, or is this strength a little more?
That's a reduction in the requirements for those teachers.
Can we see any reason why reducing our standards for the faculty we would hire to be useful for us?
Um, there, in the candidate pool, it, in short, no, reducing the, the requirements for teachers, I think, a little bit. Um, in the areas where we would maybe struggle to find candidates, that would be one way to broaden the pool, but the, um, you can imagine that if you're lowering the requirements, there's a chance that the quality of the candidate may also be reduced.
Russ, is this twenty-three ton?
Uh, uh, my apologies, my notes, I just made.
I think it's twenty-three ton. I think that was, um, um, post act ton. Uh, there's a lot of cherry picking going on, and I know this board was very vocal about, uh, pivoting away from some of the requirements, like TECA, and, uh, let's go out and find somebody who's doing this, and put that person in, bypass all the credentialing, that type of thing, which I support. What I don't support is, uh, the last couple of sentences. Uh, passing the fort can be costly and time-consuming, et cetera, with a relatively high failure rate. Then my que, first question is, why the hell do we have that in place, if there's a high failure rate? But this is my, my concern, especially among teacher licensed applicants of color and applicants whose first language is not English. I'll be darned if I want, um, a teacher in here who is, doesn't have the first language as English. This may benefit some other school districts. That's okay, but, uh, I don't support this, as is, so.
I would agree. That was my next point.
Yeah.
Tom? Yeah, a couple of things. Uh, page seven, Resolution twenty-three dash thirteen. Um, Bob, I think you already referenced this one.
Mm-hmm.
All these resolutions go to the lobbyists, which then try to make them, you know, turn into laws. Um, if, if this would pass, we wouldn't be able to have our school safety officer.
Right, exactly.
That's probably enough about that one. Next page, uh, Resolution twenty-three fifteen. If I'm reading this correctly, WASB wants this state to fund meals for every student. I guess they think that our state parks are filled with money trees. Um, and then Resolution twenty-three sixteen on page nine, regarding learning loss. I think districts already received hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars in ESER funds, which could have been allocated towards earning loss. So, they've already had that opportunity. And that's all I got.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay. And again, please give Bob your feedback. We appreciate it. Item B, Discussion and Action to Approve the Twenty-Twenty-Three, Twenty-Twenty-Four School Year Calendar. Dr. Reiter.
I'll turn this over to Mr. Noack and Mr. Misiac, who, uh, kinda led the charge on this work.
Thank you. Um, you have in front of you the background for, uh, the calendar team and the work that occurred, as well as a draft twenty-three, twenty-four calendar. Uh, the group considered, consisted of, uh, elementary, middle, and high school teacher reps, elementary, middle, and high school administrator reps, as well as, uh, district office reps and school board rep. Um, the calendar, as we began, um, you know, we, we had some ideas of ways that we might modify, but what we quickly realized is that with the parameters of beginning on September one and ending at a reasonable time, um, you, you really become kinda sandwiched and, and you're limited relative to what you can do. Um, as you've seen in previous years, there's, there's an awful lot of professional development at the front end prior to September one. That, to me, is precisely why. So, um, we'll go through, um, before we do that, one of the pieces of this that we initially wanted to look at was parent-teacher conferences. And, uh, prior to beginning the work, uh, Mr. Misiac put out a parent survey. I'll let you speak a little bit to what we found.
Sure. And the parent survey surveyed parents as to the structure of our parent-teacher conferences, where we have night options, day options, and then how parents accessed that. Uh, overwhelmingly, parents suggested that they like the way that we conduct, uh, parent-teacher conferences. If there was any modification that was suggested that they would make, they would offer more nighttime slots. Uh, but parents did say that they appreciated the opportunity to be able to meet with teachers during the day. So, reflected in the calendar were the preferences of our families to offer both a daytime option and a nighttime option. Um, we didn't, um, deviate from this year's current conference schedule in terms of offering a spring and a fall.
Right. To that point, we look very similar. Uh, we would look very similar next year compared to this, and previous years, too. A few things that, uh, are noted and are the bulleted items, I'll just go through them quickly. Uh, the proposed, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four school year cli, calendar includes a start date of September one, which is consistent with most of our surrounding districts. Um, includes, uh, professional development days throughout, which lead to a June seventh end date. Uh, there's one addition, uh, one modification we wanna know, I'll do that at the end relative to end date. Uh, it includes, uh, a day off prior to Thanksgiving, as has been past practice and is appreciated by, uh, our families and our teachers. Uh, it includes a winter break with classes ending December twenty-second and resuming on January second. A spring break, uh, in which, uh, classes ending on March twenty-second and resuming on April second. This is one of those years where the Easter break falls within the spring break and includes the Monday off after Easter on the back end. Um, finally, it includes, uh, I should, a few more things. Uh, somewhat unique this year is the Friday, May twenty-fourth, and Monday, May twenty-seventh, as part of observance of Memorial Day. Uh, and then, as I mentioned, a, an end date of June seventh. Uh, one add-on to that, which we would like to make sure is included in any type of approval, we didn't note it here, um, and that is, uh, an end date for four K of June sixth, because June seventh is a half-day. Um, the end date for, for four K would logically be that prior day, June sixth. Um, uh, as, you know, has been discussed, the elementary teacher workdays are something that are in this year's calendar and have been in, you know, singular form in previous years, but are not in this calendar. Um, it's something that was, has been discussed a bit, and there's a sentiment that it creates some difficulties for families when we have siblings, um, in some cases, providing care for, uh, younger siblings. And when they have school, it, it causes problems. Um, uh, so that, that came into play as, as part of this calendar. Um, that said, uh, I think the general idea here again is that this calendar does look very much like what we've seen in previous years. Uh, with that, I'll open it up for discussion.
Yeah, I'll start off. Um, the goal of this is to develop, this is a draft calendar so that we have some idea looking forward what the school year is gonna look like. Um, going back to some of the concerns that we've heard in the in-service days, I see there's like a dozen on here. Those are not set in stone. Those are days that we remain flexible. Jake, I think you might be able to help me out here, Chris. Um, those are flexible days that we can put some work groups into those, or some work time for the teachers into those as well.
I'll let Jake speak to it, but I wanna speak briefly to why, how work time appears, uh, teacher work time appears in this. You'll see two days. It's the day prior to the start and the day immediately after the, the, the end of second sem, uh, first semester. Both tho, both of those are designated as workdays, as they, as they have in many previous years. They're the only days that we put as workdays set in stone here because we know just time-wise, that's what teachers are definitely going to need. Of the other days, and I think you have color copy it, um, in line, um, those blue days are, are noted as professional development, but woven into them, as Jake can speak to this more, but woven into them is work time as well. We can't note them on here because the way he does business with professional development, it has to be varied.
Mike sorta covered it.
So, so.
And you almost punched him. So, uh, that's part of the intent with the professional development. You could see in the learning loss plan that there are days that are going to be needed that are embedded within the school year to carry that learning forward. Uh, in addition to that, we built in, and this would be a part of an, you know, whether it's in the ESER plan or the way that we look at our Title II funds, would be to embed professional development throughout the year, not just on those one-off days. But those days are gonna be exceptionally important for us to have in terms of running curriculum reviews, um, so that we can do some of the work that, um, is difficult to do, um, when subs are hard to find. So, pulling a group of twenty-five teachers together to do a curriculum review is very difficult during the school year. Um, you could imagine, I, I wouldn't be able to find that many subs. Um, but with that, um, there's a leadership team that helps, you know, create the priorities for those days, and being responsive to teachers if there are days or times within those days that we would need to allocate to teachers to carry some of that work forward, we would do that. Um, some of the things that were mentioned, um, by our teachers who came up to comment, and, um, by some of the feedback that was provided by principals, some of that work directly aligns with the work that we're doing as a district. So, looking at student data, developing small groups, those are things that we can bring in to alignment with the professional development, learning that they're doing, and then there's an opportunity to apply it later on in the day.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah, um, we heard from a couple of our rock star teachers tonight from elementary. I think we all received the emails about the, the two days. Where were those two days? At the beginning of the school year, where they spread throughout, at the latter part of the school?
Um, there's one in the spring, and I believe one in the fall, right, October?
October fourteenth and May twelfth are the dates for this school year.
Got it. Uh, my daughter, Becky's a grade-one teacher in Madison. She's, she needs time, so I hear what you're saying. Um, but you talked about those other days. Could those other days fill the need, or fill the gap of the two days that they're technically losing for prep?
There's, so, one day that, um, is not accounted for in the current calendar, but is accounted for this calendar, there's a one day, um, less of student contact time that's represented in this calendar. Um, so that's a non-workday for everybody. So, that was similar to what we were describing, where it's tough for, um, our schools to be on different schedules. Um, in addition, so if you think about, there's like eight hours, then that's not accounted for in terms of last year's, this current year's calendar and this year's calendar, um, distributed over the professional development days that are allocated in this calendar. That could easily show up there in terms of, um, time that could be allocated for teachers. Again, I would want to be responsive to teachers, and I wanted to work with the leadership team to develop those agendas for those days so that, um, we're maximizing them because there, even though it seems like there's a lot on the calendar, it, it's hard to carry the work of the district in that limited amount of time or days.
And Mike, you mentioned that the reason why, um, the two days were not in the upcoming calendar year was because you're getting feedback from parents about some different scheduling and so forth. Was that, how many, what percent of our, our parents were giving you feedback on that?
I, I received calls as to why this fall day, um, elementary, our elementary schools were off, but our middle and high school kids were in school because it was an elementary teacher workday, and that it, it compromised families that maybe have a child at KMS and a child at County Line, and I mean, reline that on childcare. Now, I had to take off, or I'm not sending my kid to school today.
Right, yeah.
So, that, you know, that conundrum as well. I think, you know, the approach on professional development days, though they say teacher in-service, is probably going to look different than it has in this district because we have priorities around professional development. And like Jake said, it'll be working with the principals and building leadership teams to maybe allocate eight to ten o'clock is work time intended, you know, one o'clock is professional development around, there is the learning loss or, or curriculum review, and that could look different in each building or each, um, level, but there could be work time built into each of those designated days versus a, just a concrete seven and a half hour day.
So, I think what I'm hearing is you're, you're, you're flexible. You know, the board goes down this path and approves this. You understand the concern from staff.
Mm-hmm.
They need that time, and I think what I'm hearing is you're flexible to that.
Responsive to where we are in the school year.
Okay, thank you.
When, when would that be determined? Uh, you know, is it, is it one, is it gonna be one of those things? Because I, I would assume that teachers would need to figure out what they're gonna prioritize for those workdays. And, um, if it's somewhere close to the start of the school year, for, you know, the, early the next year, I think that's probably plenty of time. I would even assume that even a month or two is probably enough time. So, is it, is the plan going to be, if we approve this, is the plan going to be that there'll be a communication from admin that says, here is the schedule, we are, we know things will change. There's always that possibility, but our intent at this point, at the start of the school year, is on such and such a date, which is, was approved as acts, is now a workday. And you're gonna do everything to try to stick to that so that they can plan appropriately and nothing doesn't come up.
I, I can speak to, you know, those August dates, that when we think about that, it's the district coming together, and you were there last year, Mr. Pollak and the PAC, and we kick off as a district, and here's what we're working on and the direction we're going. And Mike speaks from an HR lens of some of the updates of going on, and then from there, it's back to the principals to set their building schedule related to their building goals, their leadership teams, and working through that. And then, there's no way that we're gonna do the twenty-fourth, twenty-ninth, and thirtieth of eight hours of straight PD that would burn out any human being, right? So, there could be time built in there that the morning is a worktime to get your classrooms ready, and the afternoon is professional development, that Jake might be leading, related, related to, um, reading, phonics, liter, uh, other components of literacy like you saw this evening. Um, but that could, those similar structures, as we then take in information of what got accomplished and what still needs to get accomplished, that helps us determine, then what are we doing on September twenty-ninth? Do we need more train, Jake's running his curriculum reviews that he spoke about on these days because it's impossible to get subs, and we don't wanna make our teachers subbed to pull their teachers out to do curriculum review, as well as it's very difficult to hold meetings at night with diverse stakeholder groups that are not more than an hour long, and our attention wanes. So, we have to use these days to accomplish the work around building consistent curriculum, developing, um, common assessment plans, and aligning the work across the elementaries that feed to our middle school and then high school.
I, I, I just wanna add, and it doesn't answer the question of, of like, the days, you know, adding days in and whatnot, but when I heard the teachers speak, um, you know, a lot of the things, I, when we say teacher workday, it, it, there's a, there's a, there's a range there of teacher workday being, a teacher's gonna go do whatever they need to do, you know, versus they're going to, you know, potentially work collaboratively with other teachers and those kinds of things. A lot of the things that we heard, to me, were on that end of the spectrum.
I'm sorry, I think that, I think where some of the issues came up was, on the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three calendar, it explicitly says elementary teacher workday. It's called out specifically versus the twenty-three, twenty-four, where it's, we're taking that one step higher where it's an in-service, or it's, it, it, so I think some of that is what may have contributed to some concerns. So, I think it's just the, the fact that, you know, they, they know that they had those two days, they were locked in stone. And, and I'm currently one of those parents who had a, a child at home, and, uh, the other two were out. It was nice. out, it was nice. But I think that's, I think that's where it is. I think if, because I, I'll be honest, I was prepared to come in here and say, I think we need at least one, maybe two, get them on the calendar, I'm not happy with this based off of some concerns, even balancing out the parental concerns. But I think I'm, I'll be for this, if we can lay the plan out as best we can, obviously things will hop up, but I think if we can lay out the plan so that we can communicate to those elementary teachers, hey, you know, on whatever day, that you can consider that a workday because we're covering things ahead of time, we have things planned later, and we can free up, even if it's a half-day, it's just something to communicate to the teachers that you will have dedicated time to take care of ACTS, plan appropriately, whether it's four hours, full day, whatever the case is.
All right, Todd, go ahead.
Sorry, I'm going to weigh in on it. I think we've asked the new administration to take on a project of leading the schools in a singular direction, and one of the things I took away from one of the comments tonight was that they use this time to fill gaps in curriculum. And what I'm hearing from the administration is they plan to use this time for curriculum review. I think that's a mutual goal, and one, work in one area can take the work off somebody's plate in the other area while being cohesive as a district. I think that's one large portion of this. The other issue is, and I will go back to the illustrative math, we piloted it, we didn't provide all the tools to the teachers that were involved, so it wasn't necessarily as successful upfront as it was or could have been. We then went, provided those tools, and it became a successful program or appears to be coming a successful program. And I feel that the administration is taking these days to ensure we're not installing a pilot or, you know, a thought or training in mental health or pick the other various areas of lost learning and saying, okay, go do it, but we didn't give you the tools to actually do it. This time is being used for that. And I understand what the staff is saying, I understand what the teachers are saying, but we can't ask them to right the ship that's been a little bit on the adrift side without giving them the leeway to make the plan. And what I'm seeing in front of us is the plan to make this ship go in one direction. I find it hard to take that wind out of the sails, I guess. That's my sense.
Thank you. I'm okay with this as a draft schedule, knowing that we have some flexibility built into it. Going back to some of the concerns and the negotiations that we had last year, the negotiation team knows that we brought up, and we didn't bring it up, but we asked for ideas, what can we do to help you? Unfortunately, our budget doesn't allow us to pay teachers what we think they deserve to get paid. There's just not enough money there to be able to do the kind of raises that, you know, they think or people think are appropriate. So we're kind of stuck in a conundrum. I think looking at this schedule, I think we can attempt, we took one student day out, student contact day out, I think we should look at wherever it's appropriate possibly, taking out that second student contact day. And the other reason it was brought up is because there's potential for transportation budget savings in that as well. Maybe not immediately, but down the road, there's potential for that as well. If we're meeting the DPI hours, exceeding those hours, even with snow days, I think we cover ourselves. So I'm just throwing it out there, potentially just taking that one more day and helping them out with a workday, a day off, whatever they need.
I believe we pay, right, Brittany?
Our contract says we have to pay 176 days of transportation.
Right, I'm saying in the future. It may not help us right away, right.
So, Mr. Noack, correct me if I'm wrong, teacher contract is a 190, currently 191 day?
Currently, like this year is 191.
This schedule is a 190-day teacher day?
This is 190.
Without a reduction in salary? So that we are losing a day?
Correct. We have had 190 in the past, but the typical contract over the last, I don't know, probably 10 years is 191.
And again, if the board goes down this path to approve, we're not approving a draft, we're approving the final document, and that's going to be cast in stone. My concern would be, I think you addressed it, would be that you're hearing all the concerns and you're going to be flexible with the scheduling going forward, so.
So, yeah, I think that...
And hopefully, to be Tracy's concern, you'll be as, you give enough advance warning so that staff can prepare appropriately.
And I think that's where Jake will come to, and Todd as well, through teaching and learning with, like I did last year, here are professional development goals for the 23-24 school year, and we know what those goals are, and then we allocate time around what that is, and the remaining time on those days is then spent for, that might look different. At an elementary, it might be a morning elementary training, but the afternoon they have for worktime, whether they work with their colleagues or, to Mike's point, go off and do what they need to do, because Jake's at the secondary level with teachers in the afternoon. So it's just that flexibility of determining. Would you say that's fair, Mr. Miziak? Yeah?
I think I would add to the communication side, right? They need to know when they would have this extra time, and I think the district is demonstrating the intent and ability to communicate better than it has in the past, and we're continuing to build on that. So this is just another area we can demonstrate that ability.
And I think it's Mr. Miziak working with the principals and our teaching staff as we go through new curriculums, when we see these professional development days, what are those timely moments to determine work time because they're scoring many papers or even outside of the elementary? I'm a high school English teacher, I have a million papers to create all that, right? So how do we use the days and we're flexible with the time in that time and it's not just eight hours of training per se?
Okay. Anyone else? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the 2023-2024 school calendar as presented.
With the change to make June 6?
Thank you.
The last day for 4K?
With the change to make June 6 the last day for 4K, yes, thank you.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Ewing, Mr. Barney with the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Moving on to item C, discussion and action to approve new teacher contract. Mr. Noack.
Thank you. We have one limited-term contract to bring forward this evening. Will Darling, seventh-grade literacy teacher at Kennedy Middle School, is in for an FMLA leave. This is a 1.0 FTE, 57-day limited-term contract at $13,395. We ask for approval.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the 1.0 FTE limited-term contract for Will Darling at $13,395.
Second.
All right, Bob with the motion, Tracy with the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Item D, discussion and action to approve donations. Dr. Reiter.
Thank you. We have a few donations, as it seems like we do every night, month, from our generous community and organizations. This evening, we are asking the board to approve the following donations. Kennedy Middle School PTA, $2,500 for a new kiln for the art department at KMS. Kennedy Middle School PTA, $2,000 for two smart TVs, display screens at KMS. WFA staffing group, $250 for GHS bowling club. Weisman auto repair, $250 for GHS bowling club. Spucker Brewery Company, $250 for the GHS bowling club, and the Kiwanis Club of Germantown, $750 towards the Kennedy Middle School Best Buddies Program.
I'll make...
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to thank the donors for their generosity and approve the donations as listed. I also would appreciate, or like to take a moment to appreciate their understanding of the proper channels to make these donations and their continued support for us.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Ewing, Mr. Pollack with the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to a turn.
All right, I'll give it to Pollack, second?
I'll second.
Zada Burke, second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at 8:25. Thank you all for coming, and please drive home safely.